Bishop.
How you doing?
How you doing?
I'm good.
Hey, good morning. Let's call the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, January 14th meeting to order. I don't see Mike Word. He kind of slow plays is coming in. So, Mr. Slade, do you mind leading us in a word of prayer to start with? Well, I tell you what, Word's already here standing up. Word, while you're at the microphone, start us out with a word of prayer.
I will, absolutely. Y'all, let's pray. Yes, ma'am. Hey, I got held up.
How can Janice hold you up?
She said...
Man, that's just... She cut Slade last time you did that, so I'm glad he's...
Let me tell you how important that is.
That's right.
My mother told me, right after I graduated high school and got my first real job, she said, "Son, let me tell you something. If you don't ever listen to anything I've ever told you, you better listen to this. Wherever you go to work and whatever you do in life, the most important thing you can ever do is to keep the ladies in the front office on your side and happy."
Is that why you shut up?
There's a lot of truth in that. That's exactly why I shut up. Yes, sir.
Well, Janice, can you proceed? She said, "Go ahead."
Let's pray, y'all. Father, we come to you this morning, Lord, and we just thank you for loving us. We come together and we assemble, Lord. We just thank you so much for what you allow us to do. And, Lord, in a time that these men are about to make some crucial decisions in our county, Lord, that we could even start this thing out with a laugh and just be humble and just be, Lord, just loving life. We just thank you for that. We just ask a special blessing this morning on, Lord, all of our responders that are out there, our law enforcement, our medical, all of our folks that are out trying to help these folks with this terrible disease that's going. We just ask that you just put a hedge of protection around them and keep them safe. And, Lord, I ask a special blessing on St. Louis this morning, as they lost two of their bravest yesterday. So, Lord, this morning, we just want to say we love you. We thank you for loving us. Thank you for sending your son, Jesus, to die on a cross, that one day we'll be able to sit at the right side of the Father. We thank you for that, and we don't take it lightly. Father, be with these men as they make these decisions for our county, that we would continue to be, Lord, the most progressive I say in the United States. We thank you for that. In all these things, we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Hey, thank you, Mike. I'm gonna do a little, a couple of things a little bit different that's on the agenda just for a second to move around. I know we got some people and some time crunches or whatever. So, Mr. Slade, we're gonna actually go to item four just a minute for public comments, and we're gonna talk about this town refuge, or town center there at the refuge. I know we got some people here to speak about that. If you can come on up, yeah, absolutely, and kind of talk to us about it, introduce yourself to the board, and just kind of give us an overview of what's happening here. This is a project that's going on. We're fixing to go on now in the city of Flowood. So, Mr. Slade, if you can kind of do a little introduction to us, and he'll take over right there, we'll be good.
So, before the board today, item A under this secondary section for me is a consideration of and potential action to approve a resolution that would declare the intent of the Board of Supervisors to issue tax increment financing bonds, TIF bonds, for this particular project. It's the refuge at, I'm sorry, yes, it's the refuge at Town Center. I had to get that straight. It's a mixed-use development. The developers, the representatives of the developers are here today to address the board. Again, before the board today is simply a resolution of intent. And so, there's a good bit of work that has to go on, a lot of activity that has to go on before there's any obligation, before there's any actual issuance of a bond where we're quite a ways away, I would anticipate, from that actually happening. But, under the law, you've got to let the public know that they have an opportunity to speak on this issue. So, today, your resolution would be to express your intent to do so, assuming that everything is copacetic, all the requirements are met. And then, at some point in the February timeframe, we will conduct a public hearing on this matter and receive any comments from the public. So, what you're doing today is simply a resolution of intent and then authority to notice publication. So, I allow the developer to introduce themselves and to provide whatever display they intend to make.
My name is Stephen Davidson. I'm a partner at Dusty Rhodes. What we're here today to do is to request a letter of intent on establishing a TIF district. This is part of, here's a board here, and I hope that you can hear me.
Yeah, come on over here and tell us, man.
This is 160 acres. It's part of 300 acre, it's part of a 300-acre tract of land that we started working on back in '07. 100 acres of it, that's along Medical Parkway. We're not asking that be included in the TIF district. What we are asking is this 160 acres, which surrounds the conference center and the refuge golf course. This is a true mixed-use project. It has 12 acres of restaurant and modified retail. This is eight acres of lofts, podium style, and a site for 60,000 square foot, basically mirror image of a cane break building that already exists. The south side of the project, again, is mixed-use. It has an area of condominiums, single-family residential. Here's an assisted living site, and again, multifamily lofts with a small area of commercial up here off Fox Hall Road. Presently, this site generates about $300 of tax revenue for the county. Christiana with Chris Gurus' office has been retained to come up with a projections of increased tax revenue. In rounding off, if this is developed as we think it will be, and there's been a lot of activity right now on these restaurant sites, that all these, all this development really depends on getting the house tops and the people in the area. The projected revenue for the county is about a million dollars a year, and for the school system, it's about 1.4.
Oh, and members of this, Chris and I could add to this real quick. The request of the county is, Mr. Slade says, this is just for an intent for y'all to pass. If and when bonds are issued, we are only asking for the county to contribute up to 20 mills, and residential has been excluded. So, the single-family component down there, which is gonna contribute to the tax base and is in the district, those revenues will not go into service the debt on the bonds.
I believe that's been explained, too.
Yep.
Some renderings of the north side. This is essentially looking at the entertainment district. This is the existing Conference Center hotel complex. The existing cane break building is sitting right here. This is the Refuge Boulevard coming here. This green space here is three times larger than the green space at the district on Highway, on 55. This is a rendering of the existing lake that is adjacent to the golf course, looking back through the single-family residential.
So, Doctor, y'all plan on doing the single family, or you gonna let someone else do that part of it?
We're probably gonna let somebody else do it.
Okay.
It's out of our area of expertise.
When you say, "If this gets completed," or "that," or "when we get that," it is my understanding, on these TIFs, we're not tied to anything until it's all complete.
Absolutely.
So, if things go south, and I know, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking, "What if we have a big recession and things get shut down?" Well, the county is not hooked for anything.
You're not committed to anything unless it's been obstructed.
Brad, you're...
No, I'm very clear. The biggest thing is the $300 versus the million. Two points, actually, two points, huh? I think that's the biggest selling point. But, once it's completed, now, I guess the question I would have, as it's done, then we still would increase that revenue, avalorum, as portions of it are done. Is that correct? Isn't that the way I, would that be correct? It wouldn't have to be till it's totally...
That's gonna be an assessor question, and I don't know that we got an assessor. We don't have an assessor representative.
Could I maybe answer that? I don't wanna contradict you guys.
No, go ahead.
The TIF plan actually does contemplate for there to be series of bonds.
No, you're not con, no, it is issued in probably two or three installments, correct?
Typically, what happens is, let's say, there's a big boom, and we get all that commercial going, and the debt and the revenues from the commercial section will support, say, half of the bonds that could be issued. If you and the city agree that it's good to go ahead and proceed with the bonds, then those bonds could be issued while the balance is built out. If the revenues don't make sense, though, nothing ever gets issued. If there's no sales taxes, if there's no rooftops, if there's no commercial development to increase those ad valorem taxes, there's no money to pay back the bonds and nothing happens. They have to perform first.
I guess my question was, though...
As it's being developed?
As it's being developed, as a big section was, is developed, then will we get a, it looks to me like, you know, we would get more revenue off of it.
We will.
Than it was. It wasn't until it's, all I'm doing is make it clear, because I need to be explained this.
That's why.
So, it's not like the whole thing has to develop.
No.
Everything hits the tax rolls, just as it typically would in the ordinary course of business. The only difference is, once there's enough money, if y'all like to issue bonds, then also be issued.
That's a later decision that you will make in conjunction with the city, because this is a, this is an agreement and a combination project with the city. It sits inside of the city. They have agreed to give up all of their ad valorem as part of this project. You are committing, if you agree to do this...
Fifty percent.
You are committing to what amounts to 50%. We, we're tracking it as a function of bills. Steve, the county millage is 40.24, and so, 20 mills of that would be roughly half of our millage, roughly half. It's actually slightly less than half.
Which goes in line with our policy.
That's our policy, Ken.
Yeah.
It actually meets and exceeds our policy, which we say we're not gonna give up more than half of our ad valorem. And so, and so, to what Dr. Stevenson and Davidson and the Sugg were saying, that at some point, you will be given an opportunity to consider issuing one of a number of series of bonds, but your maximum, maximum exposure on bonds is $70.
So, Dr. Davidson, has the city approved this intent already?
It passed last week.
Oh, good deal.
We're having a hearing on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay. All right. Looks like a great project, man. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Very much appreciated. Anything, any other questions?
Doctor, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thanks for letting us put you on the front of the agenda this morning.
Thank you so much.
Yep, you got it. Slade, do you wanna cover these sections, one A and B, real quick while you're here, since we kind of got this fresh on the mind?
If I may, and I think it would be appropriate for our friends and guests to be able to hear the board's action on this as well. So, we would, with the board's indulgence, we'll go ahead and consider and act on the resolution. Again, a resolution of intent is what you would be adopting today. It allows for the issuance of bonds at an appropriate time with your agreement in conjunction with the city of up to and not to exceed $7 million in tax increment financing bonds. And that is in compliance with Chapter 45, Title 21 of Mississippi Code. The project is eligible for tax increment financing, and the, a public hearing is needed as well in conjunction with the issuance of those bonds. So, I would ask you to consider adoption, and I need a motion in a second, to consider adoption of a resolution of intent in that respect.
Okay. The board's motion, motion to approve by Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign. So, that's item A to approve, and then...
Okay. One thing, I'll make sure, I'll see you back to writing. Marcus, make sure is, you people understand, I mean, it's written, they understand what we're talking about, the difference in the revenue, what it is now, what it's gonna be, and how it increase, how it increase as it's being built.
Absolutely.
And, we're never giving away more than 50%. I say, "Giving away," resolving 50%. We're not giving the whole boat away like some other municipalities and counties do.
Absolutely. So, TIF financing projects can be a little bit curious and complex and difficult to explain. Let me, let me, let me make a run at it. What has happened or what will happen is a defined area called a TIF district has been identified. That's the 160 acres. Everything we're talking about applies to that 160-acre project.
Except residential housing.
That's correct. And I'll come back to that point. It does not apply to any other area in the county. You're only identifying this one particular area. What you were told, accurately, by the way, is that the current amount of ad valorem tax revenue that is received by Rankin County, as a normal course of how we assess property in Rankin County, the current amount of tax revenue that you're deriving is $300 a year.
Right.
Okay? It's vacant. There's nothing there right now. Okay? And so, it's sitting in a good spot. And so, now, it has been identified, and you're being asked to draw a circle around that area and call it a TIF district, which qualifies it for specific treatment under the law. So, the state legislature has authorized this board to use this process to promote development of property that might not otherwise be developed without some level of public participation in that investment. All right? And so, how it works is this. The developer, once you establish that as a TIF district, once you identify that as an important economic activity, the developer is responsible to go and construct it. Your agreement to participate is as follows. After the developer puts all of the public infrastructure in, and what I'm talking about is streets that are public streets, infrastructure that is public infrastructure, such as sewer, water, and other things, typically, the city is gonna control those issues. Once all of that has been installed by the developer, the developer has the ability to come back to this board and say, "I have completed the installation at my cost of that infrastructure that will be public inside that 160 acres. And here is a certificate from our engineers and our architects that demonstrates that we've completed that to their satisfaction and to your satisfaction." And if this board then chooses to do so, it can issue bonds, which will be paid back over a defined period of time, probably 15 years, issue bonds up to a stated maximum amount, in this case, $7 million, to quote, "reimburse the developer for the public infrastructure that has been installed." This is the critical piece of that explanation, Jared. Nobody in the public is paying for anything that will be private property. Now, one dime of those bonds will go to pay for private property. It's for the public infrastructure that is installed inside that 160-acre parcel. Okay? Now, why would, why would the public want to be involved in that? It goes back to Jared's question about, what is the tax revenue? At some point, after these improvements are installed by the developer at the developer's cost, there will be ad valorem taxes that then apply to all of that new development that's put in. So, the condos and the townhomes and the commercial structures and even the other amenities that are there will be assessed for purposes of regular, normal ad valorem taxes. They will be assessed as our routine procedure requires. As the land use changes from vacant to occupied, that assessment will go up. There has been a prediction by people who are supposed to know, Miss Sugg and others, there has been a prediction about what that increase in tax revenue is likely to be. It's somewhat of a guess, but most of the time, we use pretty conservative principles to come up with that. The anticipated amount of ad valorem revenue that will be derived as a result of the improvements that are planned is in the neighborhood of a million dollars annually. Your pledge...
But, there's additional for the school.
That's correct. 1.4 million for the school. And by the way, we're not, we're not talking about the school district here. This is Rankin County.
Right.
What you're pledging is 20 mills of your 40.24 that will be assessed to those improvements. If everything goes like we anticipate, no sure thing on this, but if everything goes as we anticipate, you will issue bonds at some point, and you will use the increment, the incremental increase in the ad valorem tax that you get, you will use 20 mills of that, or half of that, to service the debt on the bonds that are issued. Theoretically, the development pays for all of this through the increased tax revenue that's coming to the county, of which you will keep half for other county purposes, your normal county operations. The other half will go to service the debt.
Up to 7 million. Up to 7 million.
Yeah, the max amount of the debt that will be issued, Brad, is 7 million. That's by virtue of the TIF plan. Unless this board comes back and changes or amends the TIF plan, which it'll have to go through the same process again.
Right.
We'll have to do another intent resolution. We'll have to do another public hearing. Unless something were to change that, this will be the plan. So, right now, the agreement requires that you participate, by the way, the city's gonna actually cause the issuance of the bonds. You're participating with your taxes. That's, that's your deal in this. So, City of Flowood be responsible for all of the bond stuff, all of the compliance issues. The city's having to do all of that, okay? What's in their city. So, it benefits the city for this project to be there, and they've already made the call. Their board has said, "We want the project. We're ready to go." And on the 18th, they will have a public hearing and allow the public to speak on whether or not the public, City of Flowood residents wants this to happen, anticipate that they, they will adopt the district and move forward.
All right. So, we got item A that's approved. We'll move into item B, the authority to publish the notice.
Did y'all, did y'all vote on A? I think we did.
We did.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought Jared's question...
No, no, we did. I just wanted, I wanted that cleared up.
Cleared up.
Yeah.
Does that answer everybody's question?
You did. You did a great job. Great.
All right. Item B would be authority to publish the notice of the hearing, and that will be for Monday, February 7 at 9:00 a.m. in the boardroom here.
I'll make a motion. So, motion to publish the notice on Mr. Calhoun. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign. So, thank you, Mr. Slade. Thank you for allowing me to adjust the agenda just for a second. We'll go back to public comments, and we're lucky to have our president of Heinz Community College here. So, Doctor, good morning.
Good morning.
Come on up and speak to the board. Good to see you this morning.
Good to see you all. Thank you for having me. Just a few quick things I wanted to share with you. Really, the most important reason I wanted to come is because I want to introduce somebody to you, and that's Dr. Ginger Robbins. You may or may not know Ginger. She is a longtime friend of our entire community. She originally was at Heinz Community College as an employee at one point in time, left for a time, and has just rejoined us. And she is going to be our executive director for governmental affairs, basically our governmental liaison, something we haven't done before in the past. In the past, that's kind of been one of a number of responsibilities for someone to have. But, now, we are actually going to dedicate one person, who that's going to be their job. And so, she's not only gonna be dealing with state and federal, but also local municipalities and our boards of supervisors. And so, I did want you to meet her, because she's going to be a contact. I hope you're gonna see her regularly at meetings. I wish I could tell you that I would continue to be regularly at meetings, but you know my schedule just doesn't allow that, unfortunately. But, she's gonna try to do that and be available for you and kind of be the conduit. So, when you have questions or concerns, she'll be the person. I would love for you to just pick up the phone and call and see if we can't keep the communication flowing that way. So, I'm excited.
Wonderful, yeah.
Yeah, I'm excited to have her on board. I think she's gonna do just a terrific job. I also wanted to personally come and say thank you to you all for the selection of new members to our Board of Trustees at Heinz Community College. We were able to welcome at our most recent meeting, three new members elected by you all, and then one, Dr. Scott Robbins, by virtue of his position as superintendent. Four members, along with Dr. Homer Burns, a fifth member representing Heinz, representing Rankin County for Heinz Community College. I want to tell you how much I appreciate it already, because those three are not only gonna be advocating on behalf of Rankin County, but maybe I'm most pleased that at least a couple of them have long-time ties to the college, and I'm looking forward to working with them and their support. Last thing I would tell you is that we are working very closely right now with our legislators, talking about what our agenda is for this current session. There are some things that all the community colleges are sort of working together toward. But, one thing that has been a wish project that we've kind of begun to put forward is a possibility of a new facility for health sciences at our Rankin campus. And we are talking right now with our legislators about what kind of potential support there might be for that project with them. And at some point, I'll probably be coming back to you all, because to make that project go is gonna require both state and local support, I think, for everyone to feel good about it moving forward. But, I'm excited about the possibilities. We've continued to do some feasibility studies on our current Nursing and Island Health Campus, and more than likely, it's gonna, it's gonna need to be replaced sooner rather than later. And so, we'll be back very soon to talk to you about that. But, I want to share all that, and then, just if there's anything I can share with you, since I hadn't had an opportunity to get before you in a while, I'm glad to do that.
Appreciate it.
So, Doctor, have you, has the board taken any official action now as far as approving and move forward with our new facility?
We are still, they know about this. They know all of what's going on. They are engaged with it. In terms of taking official action, we haven't taken official action, because we'll be quite honest with you. I guess for me, I want to make sure we have all of our ducks lined up before we try to go forward and say we're doing something. Historically, our college sometimes has jumped the gun just a bit on projects, and I don't want to have to go back later and say, mea culpa, we really can't do that project. So, I want to make sure we have everything in line before we put it out there publicly.
Well, we, man. So, you know, Ginger, welcome to the team again. I guess we'll be working with you on trying to get this project approved and moving forward.
Great. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all.
All right. One other item that wasn't on the agenda, I'm gonna add to it there in the public comments. Mr. Primos, I know you've had a few minutes. You'd like to come up and say a few things to us and tell us about y'all's project there that's coming on the Highland, I'm sorry, I want to say Highland Colony, but I meant to say Hugh Ward Boulevard area, right? So, Mr. Primos, good morning. I'll let you introduce your guest with you here behind you.
Appreciate it. Charles, come on up here. Charles represents U-Haul, and we're looking at a project on Hugh Ward Boulevard and Spilway Road. You know, U-Haul is, you know, they're trying to get into this area. They've got one over in Earl. And, you know, they've had to adapt to the changes of, rather than go into an older structure and get in somebody's backyard, they had to, you know, remodel it, and they're looking, doing like an $8 million project. It looks good. So, he's here to tell you what he's gonna do and, you know, let y'all just kind of look at it and see if there's, you know, as far as exterior, if there's any changes that you prefer, brick, or whatever elevation that you may want. You know, they're willing to hire architect Dean Dalladin or somebody and try to get really a good-looking building. It's U-Haul. It's not outside storage. It's all inside, kind of like Strong Point that they did right next to Tire Depot. It looks really good. But, for in this area, it's probably gonna be one of the nicer-looking buildings.
Where is this gonna be located?
On Hugh Ward and Spilway. You know where the villas?
Yeah.
It'd be just north of the villas, always Spilway. You got Renaissance Bank on the corner.
Yeah. So, you're going in between them?
Yeah. Yeah, he's gonna, you know, they'll have a big buffer by the villas, and I think this could be positioned more towards where it used to be a Fred's Dollar or something like that.
Most of the, all the activity will be at the front of the property. Like you said, my name's Charles Johnson. I'm the local company president for U-Haul Mississippi. We're just looking to expand into this area, get closer to our customer base. All of our research shows there's just tons of potential storage customers in the area. And like Mr. Primo said, everything we're doing is trying to be interior storage. We'll have a warehouse area on the side as well, which essentially will house what we call U-boxes. It's essentially a small portable container that we deliver to the customer and then pick back up and store for them, or ship across the country or across the globe.
So, you don't want to do outside storage for those?
At this point, we do not. Everything will be indoor for those, or those boxes.
Yeah, I think that's the critical thing for the area over there is indoor storage rather than compared to outdoor storage. It clogs up everything and brings our, the eyesight problem that comes into play. The cool part about this thing here is, in the area where it's at, it's all indoors. Notice some renderings right there of kind of their vision of what's gonna come around.
Yeah.
That's a conceptual at this point. I mean, we didn't have a lot of...
I mean, we didn't have a lot of architectural design elements to go on. So, I sent in a couple of pictures of surrounding businesses, and they tried to fit in the best they could.
You know, in the past, we had some people try to put storage places there, but it was outdoors. And it really got the community upset. And I understand totally why they were upset over something like that. But this is a rendering.
We have about two hundred people here.
Yeah, packed in here for sure.
Voicing their opinion. And we'd prefer not to do that again.
This makes it look like almost a commercial building. Well, it is a commercial building, but it's on the inside storage side of it, so.
He mentioned Strong Point. Is that, is that Old Fan?
That's not Old Fan.
Is that Coastal Regard? Is that the one?
Right, that's the one. And it's all indoors also.
So, that facility really turned out really nicely for us. And we've not heard, to my knowledge, we've not heard any follow-up complaints about that facility from the neighborhood, right?
Correct, correct.
So, that, you know, that visual and that being an indoor-only setup has worked well for us in that situation.
Well, I know the one in Pearl that they remodeled that building, that y'all have some rentals out there. Are you planning on doing that here?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to suggest if you do, we need to put some fencing up, you know, and maybe park them behind it so they're not all just sitting right out front there. You know, just some type of camouflage, so to speak, where it'd be some metal fencing or what have you. I think it'd look good, you know, decorative, something.
So, I guess from this point right here, Mr. Slay, you can kind of steer us. And Ms. Renee, I wanted you to look at it as well. If we need to add it to the agenda for the next board meeting or the work session, or for you guys to be able to research it, check the zoning, if there's any kind of things that need to happen on that. I know this is a new project that's new to your ears when they walked in here this morning. I want to give you guys time to look at it, review it, see the plans, and get back with those, those to be sure that if there's something the county needs to take action on, we can take action on at that point, at another time.
All right, well, in the C2, I think if they have the trucks there on the outside, they'll be required to go through the conditional use process to see if they can be approved for that.
For trucks for being an outside of the.
For the U-Haul, the rentals that you were talking about?
Right.
How many, do you have an idea? How many do I have?
This depends on the economy. The more people moving in, the more equipment we'll have. And of course, the more people moving out, the least or the less we'll have.
Well, obviously, your numbers show that storage is needed in this area.
Correct.
Would this, would this supply the demand, or would there still be a demand after this?
There's still demand everywhere in the state. I mean, it's, we're looking to expand in most of, all the major residential areas. I mean, as far as Rankin County goes, this one would pretty well cover us in Rankin County.
So, I think probably the best option, if we're going to need the conditional use for the outside vehicles that might be parked out from that same point, maybe if I can put you in contact with Ms. Renee at this point here, get everything lined up paperwork-wise, we can add it maybe to the agenda on the next meeting, have another discussion. If we need to put it out for public comment, which I'm sure we will, to post it or whatever for the conditional use, we can do that on the next meeting. The main thing I wanted today was you guys to see the renderings of it, to see what they're actually talking about, and begin that thought process.
What size is the lot?
The lot is just ten point nine acres.
Almost eleven acres.
Yes, sir.
Big lot.
Yeah, it's huge. And it's been vacant for, I mean, forever, I guess. It's just there. Nothing there. All right, y'all good?
Primo said, "It ain't been that long now."
All right, thank you for coming in this morning. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Ms. Janice, we have anything else under public comments that you see? Hey, would you be sure Ms. Renee has your contact numbers and information right here just so she can reach out to you guys and figure out where we need to go from there? Janice is on top of it. All right, so we're going to move to item number four. If we see nothing else under public comments and recognition. So, item five would be old business, a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
A motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign. Item six, under consent agenda, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign. So, item seven, Ms. Gilbert, good morning. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Excellent. Oh, wow. Is it holiday Monday?
Holiday Monday.
It is one. What holiday is Monday?
It knows holidays.
Okay, so under mine, I have requesting authority to pay registration fees in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars for I double O course, four hundred, and travel-related expenses.
All right, so motion by Mr. Bishop to approve, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you.
Item number eight, Mr. Sullivan. I don't see him here, so we'll entertain a motion to maybe tie items A and B together. So, so moved. Motion by Mr. Bishop to tie and approve items A and B for Mr. Sullivan. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign. Item eight passes. Item nine, Ms. Herring, good morning. Why is it when the taser stuff comes up here, I start sweating on that same part? Should I be sweating on that?
Yes.
I think Barry Vaughn has tormented me as bad with that dagum taser stuff. Sheriff, we may have to take his three dollar an hour bump on that. But I didn't think about it until I saw a taser come back up here, and I started going back into convulsions again. Ms. Herring, be gentle with this.
I'm just requesting sole source approval of Axon Enterprises for the taser brand product. We've done this in the past. The last time we did it was March of two thousand and twenty, and I just wanted an updated sole source letter on the minutes.
All right, so the board wishes to approve our knowledge. Motion by Mr. Gaines to acknowledge. So, second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign. Item nine passes. Under eight. Thank you, Ms. Herring. Mike Harrison, good morning.
Good morning. How are y'all?
Good.
Prove A and B?
All right.
Now, prove AT&T to construct in Spillway and Magnolia Trails in that Mallard Point subdivision over there.
Okay. So, I'll make that motion to approve item A. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign. So, item B, Mr. Harrison.
B is request Comcast to bury a C eight TV cable along Glenview and North Haven Place.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve. Item B, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign. So, item A and B passed. Mr. Harrison, anything else? Looks like you've got something else on your mind you want to drop in there.
Well, I do. I do. So, we got the utility permits we approved. We've had utility permits we've approved, and we've been holding for over a year. Things change. Construction changes on developments and stuff like that. I would like authorization from the board to be able to change that to a time period. Six months grace period would be great for us. And if there's, that way they'll resubmit back to us in six months. If there's no changes, we already got board authorization. We can move forward with it if y'all are okay with that. If there's changes, then we'll have to present it back to the board. But we're getting, we're getting permits. I think I got twenty permits over a year.
Yep. So, you're, I think, the structure of the policy would be like this. There's a, there's an initial time limitation on the submission. Once the permit is issued, it's valid for one hundred and eighty days, six months. It can be expanded at the discretion of the road manager. But the discretion of the road manager would be that he gets a phone call after the one hundred and eighty has expired from the, from the permitee saying, "Hey, I need to move forward now, and there's no change to anything." Mike then has the discretion to say, "Light a shuck, go ahead under the original permit." If he doesn't feel good about it, he says, "Nope, resubmit all your paperwork, and we'll do it over."
That sounds good. What about these? Are these going to stay like they are?
Yeah, so, no, what I would suggest is we allow somebody, me, Mike's ladies, to notify the current permit holders that are out of time, that they've got to resubmit.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Who are you hanging on to, are they? Is it same utility or different ones?
I mean, what happens, Jay, is engineers get different things, and they go ahead and get it pushed out. It may not be ready for construction, or they may not have the capability, the funds to do it. So, the problem is, you've got somebody in Michigan doing one thing, somebody in Atlanta, Georgia doing something else, and before it gets down here to Mississippi, I mean, next thing you know, it's over a year old. I mean, I got, I got one that's three years old that's active right now.
So, is it the issue of just the hassle of keeping up with them? Is that?
I mean, no, we keep it on, we keep it on a spreadsheet, but we don't, I mean, everybody's building subdivisions. We don't know the change. What we look at today is that. But in six months or a year down the road, the road may have changed.
Jay, on their permit, it shows that it's going to be laid along here with these other utilities that are in place. There may be six other utilities that have now gone in, in between them getting a permit and them wanting to get ready to get started. They need to show us what's in the ground.
Okay.
So that it's close in time to when they're actually conducting the activity.
I'm trying to make it easy where they just resubmit. And if they don't have no changes to the plan, we review that. We look at the lay of land and everything and stay the same.
All right, Mr. Slay, do you want to word that in some kind of acknowledgement or addition to the agenda? Or how do we need to do that? Or do you just want an instruction to do that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, what we'll do is reflect on the minutes. And what I want you to do is a motion to revise your permit policy, to put an expiration date on the permit of six months, subject to being extended at the discretion of the road manager. That's all that needs to be reflected on the minutes. And then I'll get with Mike about how to actually word that on the permit.
All right, so we can entertain a motion to add that item to the agenda in Mr. Harrison's.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign. So, then a motion to approve that as Mr. Slay stated.
I'm making a motion.
Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign.
All right, I got one more thing. I'm going to stay up here. Let me stay.
Come on with it.
Just something for y'all to think about. I've been trying to think about a plan. It's going to take a little bit, but we'll see how y'all feel. So, recycling tires. We take in recycling tires. Well, a few weeks ago, tires just got to building up, and, I mean, two or three hundred tires a week. So, we started making people log in, getting their name, driver's license number, where they from. We've got people from Jackson. We've actually got one guy that lives in Crossgate Boulevard. Crossgate's apartments over here just brought over a hundred tires in the last two weeks. Says he cleaned up around his house. I need, do y'all want to do?
I mean.
We're going, we're going to seed our grant.
What's happening, seems like what's happening, and obviously what's happening.
They work.
They're working with somebody, or somebody's paying them to get rid of these tires, and they're just going over there instead of having to fade it with them. They're making money just dumping them. Any man, I mean, like we were talking yesterday, I got, you know, I got, I probably don't even have a dozen tires a year on myself.
I mean, road farming, I mean, we get rid of maybe a hundred and twenty, thirty tires a year.
So, that's, that's what's going on.
So, what do you want to do?
Well, I don't.
I mean, I think what I'd like to do is be able to come up with a plan. I just want to talk to y'all first about it. It's just preliminary. If y'all wanted to come up with a plan about it, of an action of what we do about it, but it's going to be a hard one to kind of figure out because somebody's going to be told no.
Taken advantage of right now.
Yeah.
And that grant's made from, I mean, ordinary people in the county to use. I thought we had a company that came and picked them up.
They do.
They do.
We do, Jay.
We get eighty thousand dollars a year on that grant that's coming. We always exceed. We don't pay them to pick it up, do we? I mean, I thought they paid us. I thought the other way around.
No, it comes out of my budget and then go pay them, and it's going to be like our dumpster. We're going, next thing we know, we're going to be exceeding our grant. I mean, we're already exceeding it.
He'd go pick them up from there.
I thought a while, several years ago, that there was a conflict because there was more than one company wanting to get the tires, and we ended up having to select this, this one company to come get them.
I don't know, for my time. I know I got about eight thousand dollars for recycled tires, Jay. We got a contract with Southern Tire Environmental. I think is the name of it. And we call them. But I mean, it's just, we're going to seed it, you know. Kind of like a hazardous waste paint. We always exceed our paint.
The grant is a reimbursement to us. Okay, so we, we have, we carry it as a line item. It goes through Mike. He spends whatever he's going to spend on getting rid of waste tires. And then we get a grant reimbursement. And at the moment, the grant reimbursement is either covering or close to covering what we're actually spending.
So, he's getting it back.
Yep. The issue is, this year, if you got a one guy bringing you a hundred tires.
A week.
You are going to go way past.
A week.
What your grant's going to cover is what Mike's telling you. We're going to be way upside down.
We had seven people bring tires last week, last two weeks. They were repeat offenders.
Offenders.
But I mean, they're bringing, they're bringing seven, seven.
Yes.
Yeah, let me give my word right. But they're bringing anywhere from seven to ten tires every time they come in there. And every one of them lives within ten miles of here in the subdivision.
Yeah, there's no way.
I mean, so, I've actually went by some.
It'll be three years for you, you know, you get some.
It's hard track. You could put a limit on what any one fellow could bring you. But what he's going to do is go get his neighbor. Carry him down there, so.
Get somebody else to.
I mean, I just want to do, if y'all want to, we'll come up with a plan.
I think, come up with a solution and come back to us.
Well, I think.
Drop it down to four. Only take four tires. I mean, that's usually, I mean, most time you go to a store and buy a set of tires for your vehicle, you pay that fee, and they keep your old tires there.
Yeah.
I mean, who brings them home? I mean.
They keep them, and then they, then that guy, that guy, somebody come by.
Same thing that we do.
I mean, most of the people that live in Rankin County that have a shop or some kind of business, I mean, most of those people call me and say, "Hey, I got six or eight of tires. Can I bring down there to the, to the barn?" I say, "Sure." I say, sure, you know, I'll bring down to the dump itself. I mean, those people call me before they even come.
Yeah.
I agree, we gotta do something.
Well, it's just like, uh, the problem we had there in Florence one time, a local tire guy, he would fill a trailer up.
Yeah.
And as soon as the guy's leaving in the morning, he'd run down, and he may dump three hundred at one time. Well, we nipped that in the bud and then he passed away. So we don't have this problem anymore, but that's what's happening, you know, you go by there and go back, my God, and you knew that's where it's coming from, we finally caught that.
Some companies paid them a dollar and two to haul the tires off to the recycling plant, and instead of going to the recycling plant and just bringing them over here.
But I, I reckon what I'm saying, probably eighty percent of the people that we assigned the other day, they come in bringing tires, live inside the city limits of Jackson or Brandon.
I think that's an easy one.
I mean, need Jackson, need to be bringing them.
I understand, we didn't have the two, we didn't have the two of those.
Well, why do we not just tell Jackson they can't be bringing them? We don't take the Jackson tires.
We'll come up with a device, I just wanna know if y'all wanted to come up with a plan to address this, or let it keep going like we're doing.
We, we have a tire recycling operation to keep tires out of the woods, right?
Yeah.
Or outside of the road.
Yeah.
What, there's a purpose for it.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I think we need to, we need to step up our enforcement.
Twenty per person, I'll be more than happy.
Yeah, I agree.
I would just say, come up with a plan.
Okay, I'll come up with a plan and bring it back.
Well, for Mike, 'cause you make him listen, like me, I make him listen.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Eight.
Mr. Slate, I got you back up. Item number eleven.
I got eight out there right now.
Looks like we're starting with public hearings again.
I mean, I'm just saying the average.
Gentlemen, your, your first item under my section, section A, is to set a public hearing for February third for the Blake Rogers nuisance property. That's a District Two property, that's to set it on February three.
All right. Board, wish to entertain a motion? Motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with a light sign, so item A passes. Item B, I think we can probably take B, C, and D together, Mr. Slate?
That's correct, those are to set public hearings in February the seventh at nine, for those that you see there. Uh, one is a conditional use, actually, two are conditional uses. One is a textual amendment change to your zoning orders.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve items B, C, and D.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign, so those items pass. Move to item E, Mr. Slate.
Item E is your Old Fanon Road overlay project. What we need, as instructed by MDOT, I believe, MDOT was the one who requested.
CMPO.
Uh, requested that we have an, an actual interlocal agreement with the City of Flowood that obligates Flowood to do nothing other than to give us access to that area of Old Fanon that's inside the city limits of Flowood to do our overlay project. So this is just cleaning up a document that MPO has requested.
Motion to approve.
All right, so motion to approve by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with a light sign.
Hey, so can we, uh, get that done, that today at the board meeting, I'll carry it over there to them?
Yes, sir, so Flowood will adopt this on the eighteenth. That's when their board meeting happens, yes, sir.
Well, today's Friday, so, yeah.
We'll get it in the mail.
Uh, we, we, we have the interlocal, I've already sent it to Rusty Ford to look at and make sure he's comfortable. I was told that they don't see any issues and they expect it to be passed on the eighteenth. Uh, so Jay, we will, what, what I would intend to do is after it gets signed today, the, the, our, our copy of it, once it gets signed, we'll get it to Rusty to get signed, if that's okay.
All right. Yeah, I just know, we have to have it done this month, so, uh, we, we don't need to miss their meeting Monday.
Right.
I'll tell what done this month. The paper sign?
Or Tuesday, Tuesday.
What, the paper sign?
Yeah, Tuesday. Right, it's gotta be executed. Don't we have to turn in like the twenty-fourth or something like that?
We got fifteen more days.
Yeah.
All right, uh, item F, Mr. Slate.
Item F is a lengthy, uh, deal that I don't intend to read completely. Uh, what you need to know about this is that a U.S. bankruptcy judge entered an order that allowed for the sale of assets over which we have a personal property tax lien to be sold to a third party free and clear of all liens, including ours.
Wow.
And so we need to, uh, correct our records to reflect that these old taxes, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, no longer apply to the assets, and that's what that agenda item says.
Okay.
And, and by the way, you're not acting any discretion on that, you're being told by a bankruptcy judge to do that.
You know what building it is?
Uh, let me remember myself here, let me look back at this, oh, Pioneer Health Services. This is the medicomp facilities in Rankin County, there was one in Brandon, uh, next to Lost Pizza, used to be a medicomp.
Yeah.
Uh, so that operation sold, it went into bankruptcy.
Yeah.
And then it was sold in the bankruptcy process to a third party. That is out of state, and it's called Pioneer Health Services.
Okay.
Okay, they don't operate in Rankin County anymore. So this is old, old stuff that we're just cleaning up the records on.
Motion to, uh.
Settle.
Motion by Mr. Bishop to acknowledge the receipt, second by myself, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with a light sign. Item G, Mr. Slate.
Yeah, so for, for, uh, tax year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, both of which have assessments, this is the same deal here.
Okay.
Uh, the, the operation closed after the bankruptcy sale was affected, they did not operate, and so the twenty twenty-one assessment should not have been made. You are declaring in this particular line item to declare the twenty twenty-one assessment to be erroneous, and that will allow the tax collector to remove that from the system.
Okay. Board, wish to entertain a motion for item?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a light sign. Item H, Mr. Slate.
Yes, I've received a telephone call and then a subsequent follow-up meeting at my office with, uh, the attorney for PRV requesting permission for PRV at its sole cost and expense to place a flashing speed sign on, uh, the causeway for purposes of some speed control. Of course, PRV has authority to run radar, as you know, being a state agency, so they're gonna use that as a speed control mechanism. This comes from one of their board members of Rankin County Representative that would like to see this implemented. They need, we need an interlocal agreement to allow them to access our right of way. The condition that we wanted to place is that they don't put this flashing speed sign or any flashing speed signs that would be in conflict with any of our currently or planned construction activity related to the guardrail projects that we talked about. We, we want them to stay away, stay out of those work areas, and that, that would be the only condition.
One thing I wanted to mention on the same thing, uh, in the last couple of years, I know Mike's crew's gone through, and we repaved that area going over the causeway, and when they did that, they put up new signage and everything else. What had happened over the years was the signs had faded based on the sun, and you couldn't see the speed limit, right? So when they put up new signs, correct me if I'm missing this, Harrison, but when they put up new signs, now you can actually see that the speed limit on the causeway is thirty-five miles an hour, which most of our county roads were forty-five miles an hour in that area that was set. So what happened was, a lot of people out there believed that the board lowered the speed limit on the causeway to create a speed trap, which is not what happened by no means. The only thing that happened was now there's a sign visible that you can see it's thirty-five miles an hour, and as we know, no one drives thirty-five miles an hour on the causeway. So, I, I guess the main thing on this is, I just wanna be sure that if we need to come back and entertain the consideration or discussion that that speed limit should be forty-five miles an hour on a causeway, I'd like for maybe Mr. Parker and him to look at that for upcoming, now that we're gonna have the, the speed flashing signs on there, the discussion and concern on the speed of the causeway, not that we need to raise it or increase it, but the discussion of the thirty-five miles an hour along the causeway is, is gonna be more in the play. This is gonna come back up, I guess is what I'm saying, when you add these things there.
Huh? Who sets the speed limit?
I, I believe, I believe we do.
Even, even though it's with, on PRV?
It's our road.
We control all the roads in PRV, Jared, the, the roads are ours.
Yeah, I just didn't know, we called it.
Usually what happens, Jared, when roads built like the causeway, when engineers design it, he sets the speed because of vertical curves.
Yeah.
Different things, you gotta put a good curve, that's reading as thirty-five right there, but when you come down the road, so you gotta put a good curve right there, that's probably, I don't know, it's leaving a thirty-five mark or something, we're staying for it, but.
I, I guess the main thing I'm, the main thing I'm asking is that if, if you guys would just come back and just review it, be sure our speed, uh, signs are accurate, that they're, they're where they need to be on that side, now that we got signs visible that you can actually see what the speed limit is, that adds to it. But a lot of people believe, 'cause when you come, when you come off the north shore, you're at forty-five, and then it downloads it to thirty-five when you come over the causeway. Now that you can see on the signs, I, I just wanna be sure if you guys would just look at that to be, now that we're gonna add the flashing lights and, you know.
I might look something running forty-five everywhere, aren't they?
No, they're running a lot faster.
So, yeah, give them forty-five, they're gonna go.
They may hit thirty-five right before they hit the guardrail.
It's not that they pay attention to what the sign says anyway, I mean, I'm just saying.
It looks good.
That's right, that's right.
No, the, the, the north shore is on the state aid system from Panayland and Circuit.
Correct.
Four seventy-one.
Right.
The portion that Daniel's talking about is not on the state aid system, so they will be going along.
We won't have to interact with it.
And I believe that the design speed on that portion, uh, will allow for forty-five, so what we really need to look at is that curve.
That's right.
Uh, we may have to, uh, and potentially what we can do is slow down in the curve and then resume speed, you know, the current direction.
Anyway, we can just look at it, that's all I'd like to do, so. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve item H.
Seven.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with a light sign, so item I.
Yes, item I is, uh, an approval, this, this is a request for approval of interlocal agreements with each of the cities that are listed here. You'll see them, these are the cities that have responded favorably to participating in the county's term bid awards that we recently made. We reached out to all of the municipalities and we told them, you have the option to enter into an interlocal agreement so that you have access to the county's term bid awards. And by the way, this expands the, uh, the opportunities for participation well beyond what we typically do. Most time it's just an asphalt bid, and so it's just a very few, uh, either materials or services that fit into that category. This expanded that dramatically to include a number of our commodities as well. And so each of the cities that you see listed here has responded in some way, at least initially, that they wanna participate. Whether they will follow through or not, I don't know, but this would authorize the entry into the interlocals with each of the cities. I wanna note here that the City of Florence did not respond at all. And so my assumption would be one of two things, they either didn't know they could or forgot to respond, or they have decided they're going their own way.
We got a man right back there.
We just happen to have an alderman here.
Just happen to have, he's on the hot seat.
Uh, I, I have not gotten anything from the City of Florence. What I would like for us to do, Brian, are you okay with us going ahead and sticking Florence on here? Good with that? All right.
I was just fixing to ask you what today was. So you wanna be put on there, Brian?
Yes, please.
Okay. I, I would think you would.
All right, um, so we wanna entertain a motion to amend that, Mr. Slate, to add the City of Florence to that.
Yes, and, and I would also ask, uh, permission to include the school district, uh, on that as well so that they would have access to the asphalt piece especially, I think that's something that could be helpful. We did it last year, by the way, with the school district, so.
I'll make that motion.
We'll entertain a motion for approval to add the City of Florence and the school district to the motion that's written here on the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? Mr. Slate, did we get that right?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with a light sign.
So if you'll help me, please.
Do we need approval, since we just added it?
I just added it.
Well, I just, I guess my question is, we're approving it, but in your motion, you added those two things.
You're approving it as revised. You're approving it as revised.
I think you're okay.
All right.
All right, so item J, Mr. Slate?
Yeah, if I could just quickly, Mr. President, just follow, y'all can help me by communicating as you have an opportunity on item I. Uh, they do not have access to the bids until such time as the Attorney General has approved the interlocal.
Oh.
And we're running about six to eight weeks on turnaround on approval of interlocal. I don't expect any of our cities to have access to our term bids until sometime in March at the very earliest.
Okay.
So please communicate that and help me to police that. Um, I don't, I don't need our purchasing area or our road manager to be caught in a bind. Uh, and, and oftentimes what'll happen, guys, is the, the various vendors will communicate directly with the cities, and that's exactly what they're supposed to do, we don't need to be handling anything for the cities, that's why we do this. They will communicate directly, and we're totally unaware, uh, and, and we're a part of the deal here. And so the state auditor's gonna get a little sideways with everybody, us and the cities and the vendors if we're moving forward without the interlocals actually being approved.
I got it.
So y'all help us with that.
Yeah. Y'all better, y'all better get on stick right there, block.
Item J, Mr. Slate?
Item J is a discussion of the Gunner Road project, and, uh, we're asking for potential action to go ahead and approve some revised, the preparation of revised construction plans, and then to authorize advertisement for bids based on those revised construction plans.
Whatever came up with the water line issue down there, is that resolved the way you want it? Or is that in the revision?
I, I would, I would go with that here.
That's in here?
That, uh, that's the only copy I've got, and I apologize for that, y'all passing around.
Well, you gonna, you gonna explain?
I will.
Okay.
So, so as you know, uh, the Gunner Road project has been delayed, um, for quite some time now. The cause of impasses that we have been invited to be a part of involuntarily uh, by a particular water association, Southern Rankin Water Association, that has completely refused to negotiate in good faith or to deal directly with us in good faith. Uh, they have come up with every excuse in the book to delay meeting, to, to discuss how to resolve the conflicts. So this plan will allow for the initiation of construction activity on this project without regard to our dispute with Southern Rankin Water Association. What you're looking at and drawing and read on that document is about half of the construction activity that needs to happen on Gunner Road. It's about a half of it, and it is composed of the area that does not include the certificated area of Southern Rankin Water Association. In other words, we're asking your permission to go ahead and revise the construction plans to reflect basically fifty percent of the project. We're gonna phase the project, is what we're doing. We're gonna phase it, phase one's gonna be the fifty percent of the project that does not conflict with Southern Rankin Water Association, and it will allow us to go ahead and get the project going. And of course, as you know, this is a bond project, and so we've got some restrictions on the use of the bond proceeds, which includes a time limitation. So we wanna go ahead and get started, this will allow us to get started. In the meantime, our intention is to, at the appropriate time, while this construction activity is going on, work to resolve the issue with Southern Rankin, and then that will allow us to come back, and our hope is, go ahead and revise the phase two drawings and get those in front of you for construction purposes, and potentially let that bid while phase one construction is ongoing.
I thought we voted to move forward with, uh, having it eminent domain, so our judge assigned us to be able to move forward.
Yes, sir. We, we discussed it, we came back and redisessed it in relation to our lobbying activity, and the discussion at that point was, there's some concern over the fact that water associations are very active this session, trying to get their hands on the ARPA proceeds, and we did not wanna create a conflict in the legislature that could impact our pursuit of the legislature's match on our ARPA funds by getting entangled with the water association. This will allow us to go on and get construction activity going, it will allow the project to move forward, and it will give us the flexibility to deal with that water association at a, an appropriate point in time that does not potentially jeopardize our requests with the legislature.
I really don't understand how that's gonna impact this, but, you know, how much are we looking at?
I agree, and I agree a hundred percent with you, but I'm willing to do whatever, but after thinking about it, this might be a better way anyway because the amount of traffic that's on that road just from the residents that live there, it may be better to do it phased, 'cause it's, uh, and you got so much traffic now, it's just traveling that road. Uh, it travels from forty-nine anyway, not to mention just the residents. So after thinking about it, I agree with what you're saying, I, I don't see how the two should affect, uh, one should affect the other. But, uh, I'd rather, but if this is the way, you know, y'all, the way the kind of board wanted to look at it, uh, the last meeting, but this will be a way to move it forward, and then I, thinking about it over a couple of days, it, it may help the situation because of traffic. You know, you're only, you're not just interrupting the whole road.
Well, what happens if we get halfway through this deal and it continues to bog? I mean, we, what's the next play after this?
Yeah, so we, there will be some, um, uncertainty, Daniel, because litigation brings uncertainty. The board's been very clear that, uh, that the solution to the impasse with Southern Rankin is a lawsuit. We have no other option, they won't allow any other option.
So basically, you get started, and you wind up in lawsuits and just stop.
We can start with.
No, you won't, no, you continue, you have at least that part, half of it done.
Well, I'm saying, at some point, it stops.
It could.
Right, so I mean, I guess that's kinda my only fear, and it, it doesn't involve me, it's, it's your call on that, but.
I, I don't wanna get.
I guess it just hems up, and you have construction that sits there like forty-nine, you know, it just sits there forever and.
Well, I mean, yeah, but if you got one completed, the other one has not been just, it's not like you got it torn up, but, uh.
Typically, we talk about litigation-specific issues in executive session with good reason, so I don't wanna tip my hand too much. Other than to say this, we would anticipate using that litigation, Daniel, uh, as a way of getting a quick result while reserving the argument over what they are entitled to for a later date. If I can just stage it that way for you.
I think we probably said enough.
We would ask. We would ask for the court to relieve us of any, um, or to relieve them of any ability to continue holding up our project.
I think we talked about that later.
The amount of money that we're gonna spend, uh, bid it twice, the, the savings that we would have, we've done it once. Would it offset the cost of paying for them, just pay them and get out of the way?
There's gonna be some additional costs to splitting it into two projects. Right. It's, it's, the quantities are smaller, so you generally, you might see a little bit higher. Uh, but mobilization is something that you pay on each project, and, and so you're gonna mobilize twice. The hope there would be that phase two comes in while phase one's still in or finishing up, so the same contractor maybe is, is, gives you a better bid 'cause he's on site. Uh, I, I don't know necessarily that it would cover the, the cost of, uh, I, I don't know that, uh, they've even really actually, they gave us some initial costs, but, uh, I, I don't know if it would cover the cost of that or not, but it would, it would be fairly close, I would imagine.
I mean, if we're gonna spend the money anyway, we might as well go ahead and do it, get it over with, you know?
That's, that is certainly an option that we could take. I, uh, at this stage, um, given the posture, given the public posture, uh, given what the community has been told, um, there's some reasons not to go that direction. There are. Keep in mind as well, and it's unclear and it's uncertain, but I think we're all experienced, we, we have some frame of reference here. Every day that goes by now, we're seeing increase in material costs, and so the anticipation would be that if the board is of a mind to go ahead and authorize this splitting of the project and authorize the publication on the bid notice as anticipated, we will be able to get construction activity going in the current situation. Instead of waiting to get everything resolved with the water association so we can move the whole project forward, the increase in material costs is what we're, we're trying to cut off there, if that makes sense. If we gotta wait eight, nine, ten months to get the whole thing done, then we may be better served to go on and get construction activity going before you get a four, five, six-month continuing increase in materials.
And I do think, I do think the, the, uh, doing, the end we're talking about.
Yeah.
Where we're starting, that's not gonna be impact. Where we're starting, that's not gonna be impact traffic, I mean, you got so much traffic on it, I think it's just gonna be better. When we tried to clear and grub the whole thing and they had the whole thing disrupted, it was just, you know, just like y'all getting, uh, Steve, you're getting phone calls, phone calls, the whole thing was. I think if you, this may be a, a way to even help that, uh, problem that I hadn't really thought about at the time, because Jay, I was actually on board where, where you're thinking.
I still think that's the best route forward, but, I mean, we've been spending more money, you know?
I, I don't because of circumstances.
Okay.
We don't want to talk about it right now.
Alright. Do you, do you want to just table? My, my point is, do you want to just table this and then talk about it in executive session with legal and then come back and address it?
If y'all want to do it that way, that's fine.
Yeah, whatever the board, whatever the board wants to do, I'm just.
Yeah.
If we want to have more discussion about it and you feel like we need to get into the legal side, then we do it in executive session. Jay?
If that's what you think, I think we need.
Slate?
I, I'm happy to do it any way y'all want to do it.
Do we have an executive session today?
Yes, sir.
Well, let's discuss it, whether it's a vote or we come out.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll table item J, Mr. Slate, until, uh, later in the meeting, how about that? Alright, anything else, Mr. Slate?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hicks, good morning.
Good morning.
Item A.
Item A is acknowledgement of receipt of the Chancery Court Order, um, reappointing Kerry Harrelson, Carol as family master for the next six months and approving her pay.
Okay, so the board wishes to entertain a motion to acknowledge that receipt. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the light sign. Item B, Mr. Hicks.
Um, item B is request approval to increase the mileage reimbursement rate to the state's rate of fifty-eight point five cents per mile for travel.
Motion to approve of Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the light sign. Item C, Mr. Hicks.
Alright, item C is the, the authority to approve the issuance of a purchase, purchase order pending the award of the state contract for the purchase of two, um, pumper trucks. Those will be going to Puckett and Walters and one freightliner tanker, um, dedicated to Cato. And we're looking at, these things aren't even gonna be available for at least eighteen months out.
Yeah, I see that.
Um, the, the contract, the state contract is expected any day now, but we have to get it, we have to get our purchase order issued before the prices increase next year.
Okay, I see.
Alright. The board wishes to entertain a motion for item C. Motion by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the light sign. Item D?
Um, item D is, I'm gonna make a slight change on it.
Okay.
Um, this is to terminate our incentive pay plan that we've been under since, uh, October and it will end effective next Friday, January the twenty-first.
Okay.
And, and, uh, just go through that date. So we're asking to end it.
Alright, so the board wishes to entertain a motion for item D. I'll make a motion to terminate or take action on item D.
Thank you.
Second. So second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light sign. Mr. Hicks, additional business or anything else you want to add on your section?
I don't.
I know Mr. Calhoun has an item under additional business.
Yeah, I'd like to just do a discussion and I think y'all had the discussion years back and I don't think I know much about it, but I know our building department's got a policy on mobile homes and I, I have a platted subdivision that allows, I think it's on R E M X.
R M X, R M X.
R E M X.
No, just R M X.
R, M X, whatever she said. But my thing is, is we had a, a lot over there that somebody was living in a camper trailer waiting on a mobile home to be moved in. Well, they called the building department, they went through the right process of calling our building department, got permits or whatever to have it moved and the building department went out and inspected and it, seen it was, you could move it. And, uh, but it's a forty-year-old mobile home. And, uh, I just, I don't know if, what's the value of a forty-year-old mobile home? I don't know if there is a value to that. And I mean, you've got residents on each side of this person now that's either living in a house or a newer mobile home that, I mean, a forty-year-old mobile home cannot go and really improve the situation. And I mean, I've been trying to clean this platted subdivision up ever since I was elected and I, we just need, I guess.
Kind of step back it.
Yeah, and I mean.
I thought we had a policy, we wouldn't, I thought we only allowed, uh, newer mobile homes to be moved in, period.
We have a policy that we look at anything older, um, than fifteen years ol- older. Um, if it's older than that, then we look at it before it's moved, just to make sure that it's livable and what condition it's actually in.
You don't prohibit, you, you require an inspection.
On the front end.
Fifteen or older gets an inspection, but it's not prohibited, Jay, if it's twenty-five. It just has to pass the inspection, that's your policy. What we also find is that it's difficult to enforce the policy because of individual circumstances that will pop up from time to time among supervisor districts.
So you just can't, that's all they afford to live in.
Yeah, and it's, so it makes it difficult to enforce what, what I would call a blanket policy, for instance, if the board decided, you know, if it's, if it's over the twenty years, we don't need it, and we're just not gonna allow it. If, if we go that direction, which by the way, there are potentially some challenges that can come from that type of provision, but if we go in that direction, we're gonna have to be pretty dogmatic about enforcing it across the county.
Well, my deal is, I don't have an issue with mobile homes.
Thirty-nine years old.
But, I mean, to me, if it was the cosmetics of the appearance of, from the outside was improved, it wouldn't be that bad. But, I mean, you know what, a forty-year mobile home, I mean, it's looming aside and then it's faded out, I mean, it's.
So then can we not put that as part of our policy that if it is, uh, you know, we wouldn't even make sure the appearance is up also, not just life safety code?
Yes, yes.
How can we do that at, in this case? I mean, can we really?
I don't think, I don't think you can affect this.
Okay, that's what I was trying to say.
We just need to get something.
Yeah.
Where the building department will have some kind of authority to say yes or no or, or it's gotta meet this criteria.
So let, let's talk about that.
Yeah.
Aesthetics, ideas.
And I'm saying in a platted subdivision, or.
Aesthetics is, it's, it's in the eye of the ball, uh, and so you would be investing a lot of discretionary authority in your staff to try to figure out what is aesthetically okay and what's not. That's gonna be difficult, uh, you guys will be in the aesthetic business.
I don't think it's that difficult.
Well, it kinda is.
I don't think so.
You see some of, I mean, you don't have many in your, your area.
Sure, I've got plenty.
Huh?
Little ones.
Yeah.
You got a pile of them.
Yeah.
And where?
Jay? Jay, first, the, the capital of, you know?
No, I thought.
What they say, anyway.
City deals with that.
Yeah, but no, I got, I have a, I have.
He don't have to deal with it.
I have one in my district too, out, out in the county.
Do you have one?
Yeah.
One.
One, you say one? I thought you said one.
Yes.
He's got some of them.
So, I mean, I don't think it'll be that difficult, really, if you got a older, you know, that's dilapidated looking, I mean, we do it right now in the Overlake District, you know?
Well, you could, you could make it applicable to platted subdivisions, okay? Which, which changes the dynamics of, that, that eliminates probably ninety-five percent of situations where it's a unit that's going on to acreage.
Yeah.
So if it's just platted subdivisions, you're gonna pick up the Robin Hood situation for sure. Uh, there may be some other examples where we've got an actual mobile home park where, that's in the county, there are very few of those, but there are some where, where it would be applicable. And you could have, I think you could have, because of the very limited scope there, many time platted subdivisions, you could have a pretty aggressive policy, nothing over the twenty years.
Platted makes a big difference.
Yeah.
I would be comfortable with just making platted subdivisions twenty years old, I mean, you just can't have one in there.
Or newer.
I mean, it's newer, yeah. Uh, I mean, you're talking about bringing something in and not kicking somebody out.
You can't add one that's not within twenty years.
And, and a lot of that is gonna be code, I mean, when you get that old.
Forty-year, I'm the wiring, you can't get the walls.
Issues, yeah.
It's a life, it's a life health safety issue. We, we can't, we can't regulate, we can't regulate life, health, safety issues differently for mobile homes than we do for stick build, okay? And so we, we have to be careful, you know, the federal government has stepped in and said preemptively, you cannot discriminate against a manufactured house on life, health, safety code-related types of issues. What we're talking about here is a policy that's more aesthetic and specific to the community and it feels more like zoning as opposed to life, health, safety, right? So the forty-year-old trailer here may be perfectly fine.
Mobile home.
Yes, it may be perfectly fine, uh, from a, from a life, health, code, safety issue, but it's the aesthetic piece, where it's situated, what's immediately around it. So by saying blanket policy, platted subdivision, nothing older than twenty years.
Yep.
I, I think we can enforce that and it won't be subject to significant challenge.
And if it doesn't, it just comes back for conditional use, right?
So if it doesn't, you got, you still have Renee because it's more than fifteen anyhow. You still got Renee and those guys are looking at whether or not it can pass the code requirements as well. So you've got some controls that are already there.
Yeah.
But by saying nothing older than twenty, what you're picking up at that point is, we're making the command decision here to protect properties around it.
But a platted subdivision will narrow it down, really, really narrow.
I was too.